Alright, so now the motion on the floor and the debate should be focused around whether to accept both proposals.
That is a new motion on the floor as amended.
Correct.
Okay, a little trickier since it's a complete change of wording. Debate on both proposals going forward. Ray.
So... So this is not the best and final, we're gonna continue by passing this, if this is passed, we will continue to seek the best and final offer. Is that how?
Drew, why don't you, why don't you walk us down a timeline as to what comes next?
Sure.
I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to identify, when will we have a best and final? Or, or what was it that we came here tonight for?
Well, I think if you, if this motion passes, the next thing that will come to the council, I mean, there'll be some, some minor things, but the next thing that comes to council for a vote is two contracts, one from the Earharts and one from the Farmers, and you can't vote both those because we can only build one. When that will be is sometime between two months and a year, you know, in all seriousness, that's probably the breadth of time I can give you.
I have a question for the, and if, and if this motion is voted down, then the floor is open for a new motion?
Yes.
Or it could go back to the original agenda of Earhart's.
That is correct. If no other motions, if no other motions go forward, then we'll be voting on the Earharts first and then the Farmers.
Okay. Mr. Mahalovich?
Not in the form of a motion, but in, in the form of a desire is that I would see if we brought both forward, that as a council, we need to be sure we have the questions that we are uncomfortable with, brought forward as quick as possible. And I would like it to be closer to two months than two years. And then also, I don't see why we couldn't go back to the original nine, nine RFP topics and try to get more clarification on those, those elements for which we started down this path. And, and actually on an email, I kinda thought that Charles Johnson was to deliver us qualifications based on those nine. I might be mistaken, but I thought I saw an email.
You are correct, Councilman Mahalovich, because I think that was my email that he'd indicated he would in fact go over those in the best and final report. And in fairness, he's, I guess he glossed over some of that. You know, I, you can probably read into his report, the long-term economic impact, he essentially said both were good. Downtown was better for downtown. Quality of aesthetic design, he said both were good facilities. Same with functionality. Economic feasibility is where he varied fairly, you know, wildly, I guess. Hotelers operating and, and marketing plan, he didn't discuss that, but he talked about both of them being good hoteliers. Cost to the city was a fairly, you've got their numbers. Capital outlay of the hotelier, certainly the Farmer proposal, well, let me back that up. Say the discussion in closed session, you knew where they were, they were at. And I think we know where the Earharts were, and the location was fairly clear too. So I think he did owe us that, and it's probably my fault, I didn't get him to do that a little bit better. I think he glossed over that stuff, and yeah, we should've got that. And I guess maybe I could take an unusual step and ask, because as, as you're kinda discussing, you sound as though you're not, you'd rather, your motion may be not to, no, let me not say that. It sounds like you're asking that we kick the, find the deadline for the best and final down a bit, rather than bringing you a complete contract? I mean, that's kinda what you're saying. You know, this is in, there's, there's no playbook for where we're going from here, of course. But in my mind, if the council moves both forward, we're bringing you back a contract. So I don't know if council needs to clarify that maybe for us or not.
Right.
One more shot at this. Taking a page out of Sean's opening comments. I think our final and best offer was not delivered to us as we would've wished. So those nine elements that were in the original RFP, I would like to see side by side. And you may have a, a very didactic way of showing it from a Charles Johnson standpoint, but we all deserve to make our own determination on the point system. And I think, was there a hundred points? Am I wrong? Yeah, a hundred points. And, but, but, well, that would be my recommendation, is that we move forward to get a, the nine RFP items, or the ten, nine RFP items.
Bob, I think you're next, sir.
With all due respect, Councilman Mahalovich, I, I think that we're, we're past the point of being adhering totally to the nine RFP items. We, we have, those were a tool to, to give developers a way to know what to respond to. And they were a way for us to evaluate their responses. But we've gotten beyond that point. We've already evaluated their responses. We, we've, we've spent countless hours going over them, discussing them among ourselves, listening to their presentations, listening to our, to our consultant. And, and so, you know, we've utilized those tools. Now, maybe, maybe they weren't perfect tools to begin with, and maybe we didn't utilize them perfectly. But they served their purpose, and we're beyond that purpose. And it was my understanding that tonight's exercise would be one to determine who we wanted to move forward with, and, and if we did both, or if we did one, or we rejected both, that, let's take the rejected both out. Let's say if we move forward with both, then the next thing we would expect is for our team, our, our staff to enter into negotiations. Now, we may have input along the way as staff comes back to us and lets us know how those negotiations are proceeding, but I don't see the council as being overly involved in this, this process, other than oversight. And maybe I misunderstood this all along, but I, what I really expected was that the next step was going to be contracts for us to decide. And like I say, with us having input along the way, but basically, a contract for us to decide, or, or two contracts for us to pick from one or the other, a winner, if you will. And maybe I misunderstood that, but that's what I was expecting from this process.
True.
I believe that is what I expected as well. I certainly wouldn't speak for the speaker, but I'm gathering what may be more technically correct for your motion is to, is to delay tonight's decision for X days and get further analysis on these criteria. But it's semantic, so I'm not trying to, I guess I'm looking for some direction. I still think, my direction would be go out and get, get you a contract unless you tell me something different, if you move both of them forward.
But, but Drew, you and I were talking late last week. If we have a development agreement, that's one thing, okay? If we're, if we're focusing at that. But if we would go with, with two, two developers, or, and/or one, one thing we're gonna have is, if you, if you do it the way Drew's wanting to do it, Bob, is we'll have a contract. And in a contract, there'll be no maybes. You know, we'll know exactly what square footage is, what build out is. I mean, am I wrong in that?
That's correct.
You guys give me some pretty thick contracts. I always read the, the wording on the carpet and stuff.
That's why it's probably not a two-month deal on this one.
I understand. And at the same time, you should be able to come up probably before then, on whether or not, as you just did, by the way, a great job with MSP, that hey, here's our five sticking points, and this is what we wanna, this is kinda the general idea we're heading. Are you in or out?
That's correct.
And they did the same with us. I mean, it was a very, and it was, it was a good negotiation. But Bob, that's kinda what I'm envisioning. Sean?
That's what I thought.
I asked Sean because Sean's a builder.
Yeah, I'd agree. As I stated earlier, I think there's a lot of details to be worked out, and all of that formulate the contract. And so, so I would agree.
Carlos?
So if those details aren't worked out to look the way that they should look, or we'd like for them to look, we can say no to the contracts. Am I correct?
Yes.
So we can say no to both at that point.
Sure.
Because there are certainly a few questions that, that's still an answer that I have for, for the downtown site. So, and I know they're here tonight, and I, and I hate that they cannot speak. I know we heard from one developer, but I would love to hear from the Earhart group as well, too.
Did you guys sign up, or are you willing to speak? Oh, okay. What point in time should we do that, Drew?
Well, we'll try to follow the rules. If, if the council wants to vote them time to speak, they can.
Okay.
In theory, whatever they say right now ought to be germane to the motion on the floor.
Okay.
Which is to move both forward, so.
I move they be allowed, what'd we give, the Farmers three, and we probably stretched that a minute. I'd be, I'd move we give them at least four minutes, five minutes?
I'd say, I'd say four. Moving in second, discussion. Seeing none, roll call, please. No, we're just voting, we're just voting on whether or not to extend the time. Drew wants us to have a vote on that.
To give the Earharts four minutes?
That's all.
He can probably do that by voice vote.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Good call, Drew. All right. Welcome, guys.
Bill Betts, if you're back there.
Bill, if you're back there.
Very good. I just wanna thank the council for, for the time to speak tonight, and for considering our proposal. This is definitely something that, that you guys are given a lot of due diligence to. And, and I appreciate all, your all's thoughts and, and, and thinking about this matter. Our proposal is, is a very valid proposal, as is the Farmers'. And, and yes, it does have a lot of questions and concerns. And probably the main concern is, is access to the state. And all I, I wish is, I wish we would get to the point where we can talk with the state and see what that third partner can do for this project. And I, I believe that they have needs and wants and desires at that site. And, and I believe that with their input, that you have the ability to get increased parking, you have the ability to get expo space if you so desire. And, and you have ability to get everything that, that you guys want in a conference center. Obviously, our proposal is limited. We got four percent of the bed tax for the period of time of, of the lodging taxes in place, estimated to be nine million dollars. My thoughts are, with growth, it, it, it could be larger, and, and it should be considered as being a little bit larger, but, but, but I guess, let's get to the state. Let's, let's go talk to the state. Let's see what they have to say, and see what they wanna contribute to the project, or see what their needs might be, and then be able to assess that. And if it, if at point in time, they don't contribute what we want, well, and it doesn't work out, well then, hey, it's, it's, it's no problem. You know, you just, you don't choose us, or you don't develop a downtown site. That's, that's fine. But I think, to this point in time, of all the years, eighteen years that we've been working on this project, we haven't gone to the state with, with a developer and said, hey, listen, here's what we're gonna do. Can you, how can you make it better? How can you enhance it? And, and what, what can you contribute to that? So I guess, let's, if you, I just beg of you, we've, we've went this far, let's just go that next step, and, and explore what, what the state can do for this project. Because I think they, they definitely have some, some thoughts and some wants and desires that, that could add to this project being enhanced.
Yeah, allowing them the opportunity to weigh in. You don't know what their opinion is, or you're gonna have different opinions over there at the state legislature, I'm sure. But it, it's important that we get that opinion, because if they are a willing partner, somebody who can partner with us to create something truly special in our downtown area, and that is where this, our particular proposal is, is downtown, then why should we not at least check it out? We, we've got to, we've got to at least take a look at it, and see if that's something that's possible. And as he said, if it's not, and we go with the other plan, I've told you, as I've been allowed to speak in multiple meetings, that we're gonna support these folks, should their plan be the one that's chosen. We'll support them tonight, or we'll support them in as much as a year, if their plan's the one that's chosen. Because the important thing to, to me, and, and I know to Mr. Earhart, is that we move forward and, and not, not stop, don't punt, is something else that we've heard. But we move forward with something that'll work best for our city, and that's for you all to decide. We appreciate your time very, very much. It cannot be an easy decision, as it's probably not for everybody to sit here and kinda follow the Robert's Rules of Order. So we appreciate it very, very much.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
All right, thank you.
Scott, thank you. Drew, would, would it be out of line, could we ask? I, I have a question for the other group, on just whether or not they're willing to, to go to the next round, if it is two by two?
Sure, absolutely. And the council can ask questions of the developers throughout this process. They're both here. We've advised them of that possibility. It just needs to be germane to the motion on the floor, which is both, so you're probably covered.
I would ask the, the Farmer group to answer that question, if you're, if you're willing to go to the next round, side by side.
We absolutely wanna go to the next round. That's what we've been saying all along. We live here. We wanna see this happen, okay? So it doesn't have to happen for us, but it does need to happen for the city. And so that's why I think it's just terrible for us to just choose to do nothing. So, you know, if you, if the, if the plan works for them, and you can get to a contract state, and you decide you don't like our plan, execute it. Or if it doesn't, don't, but at least take that next step. Thanks.
Okay, any other questions for our developers on this motion? Any other debate on this motion? Seeing none, could you please read the current motion?
The motion is to approve both proposals.
Roll call, please.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
No.
Carol?
No.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
No.
Hussy?
No.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Looks like by a vote of six to four, this process continues, gentlemen. Drew, would there be anything else as far as on number three, we would need to do tonight?
I don't think so.
With that being said, I wanna thank the Farmers and the, and the Earharts both for getting to this stage. Staff will be in contact soon. We will have a short recess, but Scott, thank you. Kirk, Rob, thank you both. Trey, thank you. Before we get started, I just wanna, I just wanna thank the council again. You know, this is a huge project, obviously, we're still at it. Drew, would you be so kind to start thinking about our next meeting, what we need to do, all the above, don't need to necessarily know tonight, but that's gonna be a very, very important part, I think, of what we do next. Would there be anything in particular you'd want the council to think of at this moment in time?
Not right now, but I'll tell you, the next step is, we need to decide whether we wanna do a consultant for this next phase, and start talking about reimbursable costs, to see what kinda things we might consider to be expenses that we'll, we'll either pay for or repay.
We do not have a work session for next Monday as of yet.
That's correct.
Do we want one? I mean, it's our normal work. So.
Phyllis is looking, what'd you say, Phil? I think the next council meeting would be sufficient to.
We can just do it after that.
Yeah.
In early December?
Yeah, December.
All right, we'll work towards that then. All right, guys. Yes, sir?
Drew, I think that, I don't know at what point, but we need to make sure that the Earhart group is able to sit down with OA, or whoever.
Don't worry, that will, that's happening as we speak.
Okay, all right.
And when I say that, Drew and I need to, you, you will have to give us a green light to do that, and we haven't gotten that yet.
Well, I know when we need to give you the green light, but we need to give it sooner than later, I think.
Well, I can talk to you about that after this. That's, that's definitely something we can do very quickly.
I say I think that we need, we have to allow or go with the Earhart group to OA, or get them to the right direction, so they can start the conversation with OA.
Okay, I think we can.
I totally agree. I, they.
But Bob, I'm, I'm hearing that we don't, you're not, you're not telling us, you're not telling Drew and I, you have this much money, go negotiate.
No, what I'm saying is that there's, there's been a constant drumbeat, that the city has not had that conversation. And, and that has been thrown up as an excuse why the Earharts have offered an incomplete proposal.
Yes.
And if that's just an excuse, the best way to eliminate that excuse is get over there and talk to those people, and find out exactly what they have. And then report back to the council in writing, so the council has the ability to respond to all of these allegations, that the council's not doing what they should be doing, or that the city's not doing what they need to be doing.
Because I don't want us to wait to the, the last hour, and it'd be like, it's, it's too late for them to talk to OA. That would not sit well, I know with me, and I'm sure with a lot of the citizens of Jefferson as well, either.
I do not prefer one over the other necessarily. I just don't believe that, right now, from what I've seen, that we have a proposal that is complete, that would, would indicate that it's doable downtown. So if it's doable, let's find out if it's doable.
Absolutely.
Okay, Drew and I will get on that right away. Drew, remind me, however you wanna go about that, we will get that process started. And maybe, just maybe, we can report back to the council on what we find at the first meeting in December. Do you have time to do that the rest of this week and next week?
Sure.
All right. Remind me tomorrow, we'll set up a meeting with OA. All right, anything else underneath number three, guys? Don't wanna leave you hanging here. All right, moving on, we have public hearings, nothing under public hearings, minutes of reports received and filed, speak for themselves. Council reports, Mr. Bob Scrivener.
Council reports. Public Works and Planning will have a meeting on Thursday, November the twenty-first, which is this Thursday, in the meeting, in the room across the hall. Give me a second, I'll open up the agenda. Our meeting will include discussion of streetlights on High Singer Road, vacation of right-of-way in Meadows Place, permitting electronic message boards as part of school signage, Missouri American wastewater bill recovery, and Smart Growth America grant. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Carol's not here, we'll catch that here in a second. Public safety.
We're just, still try to figure out if we have another meeting. We will, that information will be forthcoming this next month.
You were wanting to know about the brown bagel, right?
Yes.
Um, let me look here. It would be the Wednesday of Thanksgiving? What do you say, Calvin?
I'm thinking we can get by without the brown bagel.
I tell you what, for now, we're off, we're off the brown bagel, the Wednesday of Thanksgiving, unless something huge comes up with the conference center that we would need to meet.
All right, and I will get it announced about there on public safety for sure, but it does, it doesn't like.
You would not have a meeting. Okay.
Talk to Chief first.
Okay, got it. Uh, let's see, finance?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to report a bit of good news for this month regarding our general sales tax, one percent general sales tax revenue. Our September receipts, which the period is November thirteenth, we received six hundred and seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars, which is sixty-one thousand, nine forty-five above budget. So that puts us a year-to-date at a positive six thousand, two hundred and ten dollars. And then the half-cent capital improvement tax, same situation, year-to-date is twenty thousand, eight seventy-four. I would also like to, and I wish there was more of the public here to hear this, but.
Watson counts.
And, and bear with me, I'm pulling up the email, but I would just like to congratulate the entire finance department here at the city for receiving the certificate of achievements for excellence in financial reporting that has been awarded to the City of Jefferson by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States for its comprehensive annual financial report, the CAFR. A certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. So congratulations to the entire finance department, and Mr. Betts, on a job well done. And lastly, our next finance committee meeting will be next Tuesday, seven thirty a.m. across the hall, November twenty-sixth. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Sean. Uh, let's see here, liaison reports, historic preservation. Mr. Henry?
Thank you, Mayor. Historic Preservation Commission actually met last Thursday, November the fourteenth. We actually had a special session that simultaneously, I did get some information from our city staff person, Ms. Jamie Abbott. They actually voted on new officer positions for the chair and co-chair. Also, Historic Preservation Commission will be sending a letter to the National Guard requesting to be part of the consultation process for the new Spanish-American War Memorial. That, draft of that letter is actually in process as we speak. And then also, the next meeting, December meeting is canceled, the next meeting will be January fourteenth of next year. Thank you.
Larry, thank you. And moving back, Ms. Carol's here, admin committee.
Thank you. The administration committee will meet Wednesday, December fourth, at eight a.m. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Carrie. Any other liaison reports we may have missed? Okay, moving on, no appointments by the mayor, presentations from staff, consultants, and invited guests. We've talked about A and B. Drew, C, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was a, we talked about this at the October twenty-eighth work session, and at the, at the meeting, I believe the council was interested in just moving forward. It doesn't take in action of the council, but I think it needs to be supported by the council, because ultimately, it's got some changes. And the councilman had asked to have it put off, give them a little more time to think about it, so I hope you all have had that chance. And if you don't like what I'm, what I'm gonna do, you certainly can make a motion and say no. But what it does is fills a vacant position internally. It is a public works director position. We, the, the idea here is to do an internal candidate search and select one of our, one of our folks inside. And then, then a position would be deleted from the budget. So you're not saving any money, but you're reducing the overall budget, recognizing that of the, we believe, staff believes, and I believe the council supports the concept, that we can reorganize and still be an efficient, successful department without adding the replacement for Roger Schwartz, who's back there, ayy. And in any event, of, of all of our needs and all of our priorities, the, that hundred and thirty thousand dollars or so position probably is best filled internally, and then we'll reduce it in under, or let me say that differently. It's about a hundred and thirty thousand dollar position with benefits and salary, and we think we've got some other priorities that need to be addressed first. So what we'll do positionally here is to have the position posted from November nineteenth to December fifth. All of our professional engineers, who, that's the minimum requirement they're gonna have, are aware of this process, so that's plenty of time for them to get their resume together. I've already talked to selection committee, it'll be made, it'll be made up, up of Mike Bates, who was here. Who's, of course, a practicing engineer in the community, deals with the city quite often, and is in fact a former public works director. Bill Watkins, who's a former city administrator of Columbia, but also is now the manager of Ryback Supply. During his time there, he oversaw Columbia Public Works Transit and the sewer, some sewer department stuff, so he's got an idea on how that would work. Larry Benz, the Cole County Director of Public Works, would also be on the committee, and he was on the Rogers Committee, and I promised, I made a promise, he picked somebody that'd last longer this time. And then Janice is the other main city staff, because she deals with that position the most. I would be on it just to break any ties, but I, I would let the other people make that decision. The selection committee will discuss the applications, and if there's any, if there's multiple applications, then they'll do interviews sometime between December sixth and thirteenth. Then selection would be made and brought to the council at December sixteenth meeting, for appointment and approval by the councilor mayor. At some point, however, several of our candidates are, do not reside within the city limits. And so, and change would need to be made to the residency requirement. There was two concepts put forward. One by Councilman Scrivener, I think, kind of a seconded by Councilman Schulte, which is to do an exemption process whereby essentially, if employees reside outside the city limits at the time of appointment, they could continue to reside in their location, but if they move, they move here. The other option is to add the public works director to the fifteen-mile radius limit. Subsequent to the hiring process, what we, would, I, this tweaks it a little bit from what I talked about before, but we would, you might have to reshuffle the pieces to maximize how our, how our employees are best utilized. So you've got three or four or five guys, kinda, there's seven, I think, you can shuffle them around. But we would eliminate the position of engineering supervisor from the budget. Originally, I talked about the city engineer, but in discussing that with some other folks, city engineers identified in several, you know, the uniform transit, uh, uh, uniform traffic code, and then throughout the city code, so we thought it'd be better to eliminate the, uh, direct engineering supervisor position, so that's the David Bangy position. And what we do is we just shift up somebody to make that, so the city engineer's on the same level. And what we do is we just shift up somebody to make that, so the city engineer's on the same level as whatever the heck Brits title is, and Richard Turner and Eric Seaman, so there's that one line of authority, so the Public Works Director, uh, there's not a gap there from, from Public Works to the engineering supervisor. So that is my plan, uh, again, y'all are, feel free to vote no, but otherwise, we'll bring that forward to you kind of in, uh, in conclusion to that, and, and we'll close up one of the many, one of the several vacant positions that we've got. So, any questions, I'm going to answer.
Any questions for Drew? Lot of information to take in. Rick.
I appreciate those efforts to, uh, to work more efficiently, effectively, I, I hope, but, uh, and I know there'll be some downsides, so, uh, why, why don't you tell us what that might be?
Sure, absolutely. Uh, anytime you remove a position, you will be, uh, less efficient somewhere. Uh, whereas when Roger was here, he had the ability to do more supervision and less engineering work, certainly he was a professional engineer and oversaw programs. Since Matt has been doing that position, he's, you know, become a part-time engineer and part-time supervisor. So, uh, you certainly lose some efficiency in one of those categories, uh, depending on how they manage their time. But, uh, so there's, it's not all, you know, rainbows and unicorns, but, uh, it is something we think that of the overall city needs, it's one that we can stand to, uh, to, uh, deal with, and I think our public works department is very highly respected throughout the community, and, uh, I think, I think we can handle it.
Any other questions? Bob.
Just a comment, I guess, uh, wouldn't the normal process be if there's more workload in that department than what the department can handle? They, they outsource that work. So, in reality, you probably shouldn't, you, lose any, uh, efficiency. You may find that your cost of outsourcing may outweigh what your internal engineering department, uh, or engineering employee costs you, but you may also find that, uh, because of, of the workload or whatever, you may find that the cost of, of outsourcing will actually be less than the cost of having a full-time employee, uh, that, I mean, I'm sure they're all busy all the time, but, but you may find, and so my recommendation, and this is not a formal motion or anything, it's just a suggestion, is that you just keep track of, of that, uh, cost and keep, and provide us with a comparison next year as to, uh, what the relative cost of, of having a full-time employee versus outsourcing, and then, uh, we can make a decision whether or not we want to restore that full-time employee.
Sure, absolutely, I mean, and, you know, although we'd be eliminating, I think it's important and appropriate to eliminate a position from the budget, because otherwise there's no purpose in doing this. But that doesn't ever foreclose the opportunity to come back to you and say, you know what, it turns out we need another engineer somewhere else. You know, maybe on a different line item, but yeah, we absolutely will, will do that, and, uh, happy to. I, I guess the one thing I'd say is, we've, we had a, a rush while Roger was here, really, of, of smaller projects, neighborhood improvement projects that we were able to do in-house. It was fantastic, but on the other hand, the capital improvement projects that are coming up are kind of spaced out a bit more. Uh, so, you know, I think especially this year, we'll have the opportunity to take some advantage of those kind of efficiencies.
Any other questions for Drew on C? I think we all agree, uh, Drew, that, uh, you and staff have done a great job looking at different ways to build the onion back, and we, we all appreciate that. Uh, no announcements under number nine, uh, any presentations, Phyllis on ten, nothing? Uh, consent agenda number eleven, at this point in time, we'll entertain a motion to accept the, uh, consent agenda as printed. It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All post name sign, motion passes. No bids over fifty thousand dollars for the first reading of twenty thirteen, one oh three.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri amending Chapter twenty Municipal Judge Court, et cetera, Section twenty-eight Court Costs of the Code of the City of Jefferson to codify a warrant fee.
Drew.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For time immemorial, the judges have assigned warrant fees to, uh, anyone who, uh, has a warrant issued. The auditor's office said that should be codified, that's what this does, it codifies it up to fifty dollars, the judge generally only applies thirty-five dollar fee.
All right, any questions there? If not, we'll have first reading of a twenty thirteen, one oh four.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an addendum to the agreement with Cole County for joint communication services.
Bill.
No, I'll take it.
Oh, I'm sorry, Drew.
This just amends the current nine one one.
You're the next one.
This does the nine one one contract with the county, amends it so that we can broadcast from our new hardened facility, the new fire station.
Any questions there? Seeing none for first reading of twenty thirteen, one oh five.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri amending the twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by appropriating additional funds from the general fund.
Bill, welcome.
Yes, uh, this is, uh, what we're trying to do here is that the council recalls at the last meeting, we had an agreement with ALPLA, uh, to take fifty thousand dollars and pay that out of the general fund, and then fifty thousand dollars, uh, out of the capital improvements fund. In order to keep the two thousand and fourteen budget in good standing, we need to ask the council to do the supplemental appropriation, so we can move the money out of the fund balance and move it into a proper line item to make that payment.
Any questions there? All right, moving on to twenty thirteen, one oh six.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with George Butler Associates Incorporated for the West Edgewood Drive Traffic Study Project.
Mr. Matt.
Thank you. Excuse me. Uh, as Clerk indicated, it's an engineering contract, uh, a bill for an engineering contract, it would study Edgewood from, uh, basically stadium to one seventy-nine, surrounding area. Uh, the cost of the agreement's just under forty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, there's a completion time in there around March two thousand and fourteen. The, uh, funds for it would come from the half-cent sales tax, and, uh, this is part of our city-county project, uh, that, uh, where we're contemplating building Frog Hollow Road, a realignment of that roadway. As you may recall, that, that alignment changed a little bit, and in that change, we, uh, discussed, uh, completing this traffic study, so it's determined what the final look of that Edgewood corridor would be.
Okay, uh, any comment or questions to staff? Bob.
Matt, this doesn't, uh, stop or delay the, the, uh, uh, realignment process. I mean, we're, we're, we're still executing and moving forward with that contract on the Frog Hollow end of, of that extension of Creek Trail, right?
That's correct, and, uh, the, the plans are essentially finalized on that, and the county is going to actually bid that piece themselves and inspect it for us. The, uh, I think the bid dates in January.
Okay, so, I knew that it was the county's desire to, to go ahead and move forward with that, and I thought that was the case, but I just wanted to make sure that, that that was happening. Okay, thanks.
Bob, I want to thank you for your leadership on this. I know the meeting we had with Mark and, and joint staff, a lot of this has come out of that. Carrie.
Matt, would you mind to call our, Carlos and I've gotten calls from John Howell, an constituent, would you mind to call him and give him the details of that particular bill, so he knows that that is moving forward?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Uh, anything else on, uh, one oh six? Seeing none, we have first reading of twenty thirteen, one oh seven.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with the Missouri State Highway Patrol for a ground lease at the Jefferson City Memorial Airport.
Drew, I'm sorry, Matt.
Thank you, and as Clerk indicated, it's a ground lease with the Highway Patrol at the airport for their hangar. The, it's a, basically a four-year agreement, the first year's, uh, lease payment is just over sixty-three hundred dollars. Does has an, it does have an escalating fee in it, uh, it's a one-time escalation, but, uh, kind of averages out about three percent a year over those four years.
Any questions, Matt? All right, moving on to Bill's pending, we have third reading of twenty thirteen, one hundred.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri declaring certain property to be surplus and authorizing the disposal of said property.
Matt.
Thank you. Uh, this, this, uh, this bill will allow us to declare three paratransit buses surplus, uh, that'll be, to be sold at an auto auction. Uh, the state has indicated we may keep those proceeds if we utilize and purchase another bus. Uh, once we get those in, we'll see, see what the proceeds are, and we'll, and look at our budget, determine if that's possible.
Okay, any questions of, uh, council by staff? Or staff to councils, it's been a long night. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Branch.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Carroll.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Henry. Hussy.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivener.
Aye.
And motion passes. Next, we'll have third reading of twenty thirteen, one oh one.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a grant agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for public transit operating assistance, and rescinding ordinance fifteen, one fifty-five pertaining to the same subject.
Matt.
Thank you. Uh, as Clerk indicated, uh, this is a grant agreement with MoDOT, administered by MoDOT for our transit authority. Uh, basically, it gives us a local state operating grant, and, uh, the cost for this year would be just over eighty-two hundred dollars. Uh, she indicated about the rescinding of the previous ordinance, there was another ordinance with the same, same grant agreement, uh, when, when that paperwork was done, it was shipped to the state, and then we later heard they weren't able to locate that agreement, so they wanted us to do another one. In that process, they actually, uh, found additional funds for us and upped our grant amount, so.
So it kind of worked out pretty goo, pretty well for us.
Worked out in the end for us a little.
Okay, any questions of, uh, Matt on one oh one? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Bray.
Aye.
Carroll.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Hussy.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivener.
Aye.
Branch.
Uh, motion passes. Next, we'll have, uh, we'll entertain a resolution, or a, a motion on resolution twenty thirteen, thirty-five.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Sean and, I'm sorry, Bob. Um, discussion. Phyllis, would you like to read the summary?
A resolution authorizing the hiring of two police officers.
Drew, you want to give us background?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is an issue that, that, that the mayor and many council people, and ultimately all of you signed off on, is an important, is an important issue to you guys. Uh, essentially what happened is that through the years, we've had vacancy savings built into the budget, and, uh, and essentially what that did is that when a vacancy became, when, when someone left, we would hold that vacancy for a period of time to accumulate saved money. And while that works okay in some departments, uh, it hurts the police quite a bit, because it takes them a solid six months to get through the hiring process and get somebody, you know, ready to train, essentially. So that slowdown has really hurt the department, and they were down, uh, five vacancies, uh, well, five people due to just natural attrition. They were also held, uh, two people were held out of this budget in vacancy savings and said, we don't have enough money to hire those two, so while we didn't remove them from the budget, they sit there without funding, and they, they've also had an unprecedented amount of injuries and military leave and medical leave. So, you know, they have been down a lot of officers, and their, their guys are working a lot of overtime, and frankly, they're, you know, burnt out and tired, and, uh, and, uh, we've got some relief. Recently, they were able to hire five new officers, but, uh, uh, the council is expressing their support for the department here, and authorizing the two vac, authorizing these two positions held in vacancy savings to come out. They will not, they will now not have anyone held under the vacancy savings, uh, for, for uniformed officers, the vacancy savings department. There is still some SIP stuff. We promised everybody we'd hold the SIP vacancies through the end of the year, and we'd look at those. Uh, it's got, because it's about a, the best they can hope for probably is that in six months, they get these two officers hired. Uh, so you're looking at about fifty-two thousand dollars for the two officers for this fiscal year. What I promised the mayor and, and his council is that the way we would take care of that is, uh, to look through, you know, I hate to use the word, but other efficiencies. There's other vacancies in departments, and we're gonna try to restructure and reorganize those as well, and, uh, so that we don't, we essentially save that money, and that'll go to these two police officers. But we got, definitely got some ideas, but we're still kind of working on the details, and, uh, whatever we decide on, it'll be something that, uh, you know, will reduce the efficiency of the overall city as little as possible, uh, while we kind of get the police department back up to full steam. And I know they're very interested and very appreciative of your work on this.
Drew, I want to thank you for, uh, setting that up behind the scenes. Any, uh, comments, Carlos?
Uh, Drew, uh, when is the earliest that they can start the hiring process as far as advertising in the paper and, and doing whatever?
Uh, I, I think the next, uh, maybe Doug can fix me, I think it's March is when they've got the next, or January or something.
Uh, actually, if I may, our police personnel board has already, uh, set some testing dates, so they've already approved the process, and by ordinance, they have to approve that process to begin, and Chief Schrader and Lieutenant Heisler, who's in charge of professional standards, has already, uh, started that, and, and we're underway.
So you don't know when the, the next testing date has been set?
I think we're test, or we're testing within the next few months, as a matter of fact. So the advertisements will go out and, and we'll take applications at that point, but it is a lengthy process, as, uh, Mr. Harper has said.
Bob, just a quick question. How, how wide is a circle do we advertise? Where, how, how, where do we get, uh, get candidates from and, and so forth?
Well, it varies. Uh, usually, we coordinate that with Human Resources, and, uh, Gail Strope tends to lead that charge, if you will. Uh, like any other police agency, though, especially within the mid-Missouri area, we're all competing for the same small group, so it's becoming much more of, uh, a challenge, I guess, for us. But we're having to look ways, uh, beyond traditional means to get people in, and, and, uh, as a, as a command staff, we're in discussion as to how to do that right now, but it's always an ever-evolving process.
Do, do we recruit universities or anything like that?
We do, Lincoln University, uh, we do with University of Central Missouri, which is located in Warrensburg, and we've gone up to Saint Joe, there's a criminal, uh, justice college up there that's, that has a, a good program. Uh, a few in Saint Louis here and there, and, um, I think perhaps Kirksville, if I'm not mistaken, I may be wrong on that one, but we have to look at colleges that have some sort of traditional criminal justice background, um, as a potential, uh, place to go, but we've maintained a good relationship with, with Lincoln, and, uh, we intend to continue to do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on, um, thirty-five? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Graham.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Hussy.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivener.
Aye.
Branch.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Carroll.
Aye.
I'm sorry, motion passes. Uh, next, we'll have, um, entertain a motion on twenty thirteen, thirty-six.
Show move second.
It's moved and seconded by, uh, the guys too. All right.
A resolution regarding the use of funds in the capital improvement sales tax.
Yes, as, as, as the council will recall from the last meeting, uh, we did the MSP agreement, and in doing so, we needed to, uh, move some capital improvement, uh, monies around, and that included moving some MSP monies up from the two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen budget, and pushing some Parks and Recreation money back from two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen. Uh, we decided to do this resolution, uh, usually we'd handle those types of things administratively, but since the funds were so significant, and also since it involved the Parks Board, we wanted to give the council an opportunity to approve that, even though they've already approved the, uh, the agreement with MSP, but just to show the Parks Board that we do intend to give them, uh, their funds back in two thousand and fifteen.
Is Bill here?
Mr. Lockwood.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He was behind the picture there, okay.
Bill, I want to thank you for your leadership on this, by the way. Uh, any questions up by the council? Mr. Henry.
I just had a, uh, question for Bill. Uh, Parks Board fully on board with this?
Uh, we discussed this in our, our last meeting, and I think, uh, the commission realizes the importance of the MSP project, and, uh, really not gonna delay, uh, our project any significant amount, if they wanted to show support and approve this, uh, resolution also.
Thanks, Bill.
Any other questions over here on my right? Seeing none on my left? Oh, Sean.
Just real quick, I, I made a commitment to the commission that I would, uh, pass along just exactly what Bill said. They do support the resolution, and, and, uh, uh, they're happy that, um, you know, that the, that the resolution states that the multipurpose building remains a top priority by the council, and, and, uh, but they understand the restructuring of the funding, so, thank you.
Any other questions before we go to roll call? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Henry.
Aye.
Hussy.
Aye.
Mahalovich. Prather.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivener.
Aye.
Branch.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Carroll.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Uh, motion passes. Next, I have underneath number seventeen, Mr. Leonard Steiman. Leonard, you have three minutes, sir. Welcome back.
Leonard Steiman, one ten North Lincoln, Jefferson City. You brought up the MSP prison, uh, deals. On I seventy, you still haven't put on a sign on your sign that you've got leased, that, that it's closed, and I've been asked on the CB by many, many truck drivers the last couple of days. In MSP visitation closed. I think the Jefferson City Visitors Bureau ought to get on, on the ball and, and not be a false advertisement, because it's closed, and you're still advertising it's open. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Leonard. Any questions for Leonard tonight? Any, uh, council and staff discussion or presentation topics? You can pick several tonight. Bob.
I'm just gonna say real quickly, I'm sure that, uh, the sign being up, if it generates inquiries, that the CVB will schedule them for next year when it will be open.
Right. Carlos, ditto. All right, anything else? Uh, okay, any new business? Uh, the only thing I would have under unfinished business, Drew, is that, uh, first of the month is a, is a pretty good ways from us yet, tonight.